Good afternoon. I'd like to call this city council meeting to order. The first order of business is public comment. Any person wishing to provide public comment on a closed session matter may do so at this time. I don't see anybody in the audience, and I don't see anybody on Zoom, and I'll turn it over to Madam City Attorney.
There are two items on the closed session agenda. The first one is Harper versus City of Redlands, U.S. Justice Court Central District of California, case number 523 CB 00695 SSS KKY, and Flynn Restaurant Group, Apple SoCal LLC et al. versus City of Redlands, San Bernardino Superior Court, case number CIV SB 2412340. And these items are being heard under Conference of the Council, existing litigation pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.9D1.
Thank you. We stand in recess until two closed session. Thank you. Good evening, everybody. I'd like to call the city council meeting to order and reconvene the city council meeting. I will now do the invocation, and then after the invocation, we'll do the Pledge of Allegiance. So if you would mind standing, please. Heavenly Father, as our city prepares to celebrate the Fourth of July, marking 249 years of independence, let us remember that our country was founded on the rules of law and a democratic republic. The citizens of Redlands are aware of the events happening across the United States and around the world. We are praying for peace, love, strength, and comfort and understanding for everyone during these uncertain times we are experiencing. Let us not fear each other and work together to ensure that we are making decisions that reflect our values as a representative government. We also uplift our employees who deliver our public safety services and programs that impact the quality of life in our community. Amen. Please turn to the flag, hand over your heart. Ready? Begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Madam City Attorney, can you please report out on our closed session?
Thank you, Mayor. There are two items on the closed session agenda. The report out for the first item, pursuant to Government Code Section 54957.1A3A, the city council took action in closed session to approve a proposed settlement in the matter of Justin Harper versus City of Redlands et al. The substance of the settlement is as follows. "Plaintiff shall release all claims, both known and unknown of any kind whatsoever against the City of Redlands and dismiss all other defendants in the case. In exchange for the release of all claims, the city shall pay a total of $300,000 to plaintiff and his attorneys, inclusive of all attorney's fees and costs. Plaintiff shall dismiss his lawsuit with prejudice, and the city manager is authorized to sign the settlement agreement on behalf of the city. A copy of the settlement agreement shall be available in the city clerk's office once fully executed by all parties." The motion to approve the settlement was made by Councilmember Tejeda and seconded by Councilmember Davis and passed unanimously. The second and last item on the closed session agenda, pursuant to Government Code Section 54957.1A3A, the city council approved a settlement in the matter of Flynn Restaurant Group, Apple SoCal LLC versus City of Redlands, based on the following terms. "Plaintiff shall release all claims, both known and unknown, against the City of Redlands. In exchange for plaintiff's release, city shall pay $55,000 to plaintiff. Plaintiff shall dismiss its lawsuit against city with prejudice, and the city manager is authorized to sign the settlement on behalf of the city. Once fully executed by all parties, the settlement agreement will be available in the city clerk's office." The settlement was approved by motion made by Councilmember Tejeda and seconded by Councilmember Barage and approved unanimously. And that ends the closed session reports.
Thank you, Madam City Attorney. The next is, we have a couple of presentations of proclamations on our agenda, and the first one will be for the Chamber of Commerce. And what I'll do is I'll read the proclamation from here, and then have Evan come up and join me at the, in front of the podium to give any remarks, and then my colleagues will join me down for a photo op. So this is a proclamation for the California Chamber of Commerce, Chamber of the Year. Whereas the Redlands Chamber of Commerce has been named in the inaugural Chamber of the Year by the California Chamber of Commerce in recognition of its exceptional leadership, community engagement, economic development, and advocacy. And whereas this prestigious award is presented during the 2025 California Business Outlook Conference, celebrates chambers with a proven track record of impactful programs and community service and was earned by both professional merit and public support. And whereas, under the leadership of Executive Director Evan Sanford, the Redlands Chamber of Commerce has been a tireless advocate for local businesses, co-sponsoring legislation as the city, at the city and at the county and state levels to ensure both Redlands businesses and the nonprofits have a strong voice in public policy. And whereas through the WELD mission of workforce, economic, and leadership development, the chamber has placed more than 400 individuals into jobs since 2022, including over 50 individuals experiencing homelessness through the New Beginnings Program. And whereas through Visit Redlands, the chamber has strengthened tourism by launching a state-of-the-art map of the city, redesigning its visitor lobby, hosting signature annual events that bring the community together. And whereas the chamber's leadership program continues to cultivate the next generation of civic and business leaders through its immersive, hands-on experiences that connect participants to the core institution and the history of Redlands and the community. And whereas the chamber is widely recognized by its members for providing invaluable networking, career advancement, business advocacy, and a powerful sense of connection to the community. Now, therefore, let it be resolved that the city council of the City of Redlands does hereby congratulate the Redlands Chamber of Commerce on being named the 2025 California Chamber of Commerce of the Year and commends the organization for its unwavering dedication to the prosperity, vitality, and future of the City of Redlands. Please help me in welcoming or applauding our Chamber of Commerce here in Redlands. Thank you so much, Evan. You have any remarks? I know you do.
And yet you still asked. So what I would like to do is make sure that our president, Jan Hudson, is going to join us as well to hold this award. But I also want to make sure that our entire Chamber family comes up here and is part of this photo as well to commemorate how large and influential our chamber actually is. I'll hold the paper. I'll let her hold the award here. So if there's other members of our board, if you will join us, I see Ken and Ginny and Pam. Great. That's perfect. And then we have Janelle as well. We have Amy Cranfield from Stiefel, BJ Baldwin. If you're an ambassador with the chamber, if you'll step up here as well, we have so many wonderful businesses. Chick-fil-A and Right at Home. And then if you're in our Leadership Redlands Program, either current class members or graduates, I see Desiree and Samita and Blake and Christina. Thank you so much, Gabe and Lauren. We are. We absolutely are. Last but certainly not least, I would want to make sure that everyone knows that this is not a one-man show. This is part of what we're talking about here, but it's our staff here. And so we have our entire staff. We have Debbie Minard, our membership director, Noah Moller, our chamber coordinator, Sabina Tidrich, our workforce development director, and Kayla Santos, our new beginnings coordinator. So it's the five of us that do this work every day. So I would absolutely want them to be in this photo. So please join us. And for the community, in case you don't know what we do, we are this business community. We're supporting nonprofits, nonprofits, any way that we can bring the community together through economic development, workforce development, and leadership development. That's what we're all about. So this award is just a validation, certainly at the state level, at the state level, but also I want to thank Charlie, our city managers, for recognizing us at the city level as well. So across the region, this is just a huge day for all of us. So thank you, City Council, for recognizing us, and that's our remarks.
Okay, our next proclamation is for our Parks and Recreation of the Month. Whereas our Parks and Recreation Services are vital for communities throughout this country, including the City of Redlands. And whereas the Parks Commission Recreation Services establish and maintain the quality of life in our communities, contributing to the health of the citizens and to the economic and environmental well-being of our community and region. And whereas the Parks and Recreation Services build healthy, active communities and aid in the prevention of chronic disease, provide therapeutic recreation services for individuals with mental and physical disabilities, and improve the mental and emotional health of all residents. And whereas the Parks and Recreation Services increases the community economic prosperity through increased property values, expansion of local tax base, increased tourism, and the attraction of retention of businesses and crime reduction. And whereas the parks and open spaces ensure ecological beauty to our community and provide a place for children and adults to connect with nature and recreate outdoors. And whereas the Parks and Recreation Services are vital to our communities for protecting open spaces and natural resources to help fight obesity and providing activities and resources for all walks of life. And whereas the United States House of Representatives passed an official resolution designating July as Parks and Recreation Month. Now, therefore, let it be resolved that the city council of the City of Redlands does hereby proclaim July 2025 as Parks and Recreation Month in the City of Redlands, and encourages residents, businesses, and institutions to participate and utilize the parks and recreation facilities and programs offered within the City of Redlands to the benefit of residents, visitors, and to our community as a whole. So I want to thank the Recreation Commission, and we have, I believe, the chairman. I want to recognize Chairman Doug Gonzalez, Co-Chair Justin Wheatley, Commissioner Joanne Lazard, Commissioner Adam Hebbon, and then staff folks, Chandra Thomas, Eric Reeves, Recreation Supervisor Dave Jaffe, Conrad Caleb, Aurelio Muñoz, Laura LaBrel, Savannah Fergoso, Stefan Stepp, Abadaka, Michael Gonzalez, and Sammy Hernandez, and Andrew Clark. If you want to join me up front, please, and we'll take a picture. We really want to thank you for doing the hard work. Doing the wonderful work for our residents, not only our seniors as well, but you do an awesome job with all the events that Redlands hosts throughout the year, both in the community and abroad. So is Mr. Gonzalez here? The commissioner? Would you like to say a few words about the commission? Oh, and the work that, I guess that one great community input is that Texonia is going through a renovation, and we had a community sharing program out there with the community to get input on ideas and some examples of what our Texonia Park will eventually look once it's revitalized. But we want to thank our Parks Commissioners that have, each of them have a number of parks that they are assigned to and do evaluations and work with our staff to identify upgrades to our facilities. And so we cannot thank them enough for maintaining our parks in pristine condition. They heavily used, and we just need more spaces, but we want to thank the commission. Would you all say?
So beauty is so important to the vibrancy of the community, and like the proclamation said, it's so important to our physical and mental health. It was a very good proclamation and included everything that I would want to say. I'd like to thank the parks employees, department employees. It's so important, the work that they contribute to our community. So thank you very much.
Just want to thank city council for their support and recognizing the importance and value that our parks and our recreation facilities have here in this town. Excuse me, and just wanted to take a moment to just recognize all these unsung heroes to my left and right, all these rec employees, for all the hard work and service that they do. They flex, they bend, they stretch, they do incredible things to keep everything pristine, keep it going, keep people coming back. And I'm proud to say that, you know, thanks to all their efforts, you know, we have one of the best services here in the entire human empire.
Thank you so much. Really appreciate all your hard work. Okay, moving on to our next item on the agenda, which is H, public comment. I have one speaker, Mr. Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, yes, one speaker, Michael Peisner.
Hello, Michael Peisner. Recently, masked gunmen abducted people from our community. And when I learned about it, I sent a video of the incident to the city. These men's clothing indicated they were police, but those markings are misleading, to say the least. I checked with Redlands Police Department, and these gunmen weren't with the RPD. The incident occurred in Mentone, but Mentone doesn't have its own police force, and Mentone law enforcement is provided by the county sheriff. So who were these masked gunmen marked as police? It was probably ICE, but they weren't marked as ICE, so how can we know for sure? Certainly not by their vehicles, which weren't marked in any way, and in fact, one of their vehicles didn't even have any license plates at all. The Redlands Police website says they are dedicated to enhancing public safety, but how can we feel safe when poorly marked masked gunmen are roaming our community, abducting people off the streets? If these men hide their faces and don't properly identify themselves, what assurance do we have that they are following any rules at all? I know a while back, there was a public statement saying Redlands Police does not participate in immigration enforcement. Great. But I'm hearing many questions from our community. Can the Redlands Police Department do more to protect us from these incidents? Can you require ICE to alert the Redlands Police prior to conducting operations in our city? Can you require ICE to make themselves clearly identifiable to the public and actually have warrants before abducting people within our city? Can you use the city's emergency alert messaging system and send out public warnings so that people know to shelter in place when these raids occur? Our police are tasked with not just keeping us safe, but making us feel safe. People do not feel safe in the City of Redlands today. I acknowledge there are jurisdictional limits, and the incident I'm referencing happened in Mentone. Will you acknowledge people's rights shouldn't disappear when they cross to the far side of Wabash Avenue? I believe we are better off when we advocate for each other. So even though ICE isn't likely to come after someone that looks like me, I choose to lend my voice to those facing discrimination. None of us should worry about being abducted off the street by masked gunmen based on the color of our skin or our accent. No one should worry that they might not make it home at night because they weren't carrying the right paperwork on them. I asked the city council and the chief of police, what are you going to do to keep us safe from a federal agency whose only priority is achieving a quota of people detained? What will you do to protect us from ICE or people impersonating ICE? Thank you.
Moving on to our consent calendar, I have one request to pull, item I-9.
Move approval for the balance of the calendar.
Second.
Have a motion and a second for the balance of the consent calendar. Madam City Clerk?
Councilmember Barage.
Yes.
Councilmember Tejeda.
Yes.
Councilmember Davis.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Shaw.
Yes.
Mayor Sosito.
Yes. Okay, this is item I-9, Adoption Resolution Number 8684, establishing procedures for placement of 501(c)(3) nonprofit service club placards on the city's Welcome Monument signs. Facility and Community Services Director Crocker.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. This is a resolution to adopt procedures to place a sign on the city's Welcome Monument signs. These signs are located on Redlands Boulevard, Ford Street, Barton Road, and Orange Street. The Facilities and Community Services Department has received requests to add additional organizations to these signs, and currently, we don't have a process for that. The resolution attached provides that criteria for the procedure for submitting the request, an outline of the approval process, and a process for install and maintenance. Eligible organizations will need to be a registered 501(c)(3) nonprofit, an active chapter in Redlands for at least 10 years, and then provide direct tangible support to the local community.
Thank you. Any questions for staff? Our public comment on this item is Mr. Andy Hoder.
Good evening, Andy Hoder, and greetings to members of the council and members of staff. Just a bit of trivia here. The subject of monument welcome signs has gained enough significance to win a place on our agenda, so it seemed like an appropriate time to bring some attention to something that relates to those signs. Certainly, a sign serves no purpose if you can't see it. And I'm referring to the welcome sign at Jenny Davis Park, near the corner of the park. There's a severely overgrown tree with limbs that blocked the sign. You can't see it until you're right on top of it. So it's just a polite request to the appropriate department. Have a look at that. Give the tree the trim that it needs so the sign itself is readily visible to drivers in passing motor vehicles. Thank you.
Thank you. Entertain a motion for, go ahead.
I'll take care of that.
Okay, thank you.
I move we adopt resolution number 8684.
I did have a comment on this item.
I'm sorry.
That's okay. On the actual, is this a resolution, Section 3, where it says eligible organizations, subsection B.2, it says nonprofit organization has provided direct tangible support to Redlands community for at least three years of the five years. So they have to have at least 10 years of existence as a nonprofit, and three of five years, they have to provide some sort of direct tangible support to the Redlands community. I'm wondering if my colleagues are agreeable with consistently making that five of five years and just leaving it just without change. Rather than three of five, just make it five of five. We can adopt it as amended.
When I read that, I was guessing that that was like, if an entity, for some reason, didn't have funding to do that in one of the years, it would give them, they would still be able to qualify if they did it three of the five years. And I know that sometimes as a nonprofit, that is, that can be difficult. There can be an off year where you didn't have contributions or something that could, that could lead to that trouble. So I think that is probably why it was worded that way, which is why it was okay with it.
Another reason was due to COVID. So if you were to say, like, to date, the last five years, there were organizations for 2020, 21, but...
And I'll withdraw my suggestion.
Okay, we have a motion. Need a second?
Second.
Yeah, it was Paul. Paul was the first.
Paul was okay.
I thought that, but...
Madam City Clerk?
Councilmember Barage.
Yes.
Councilmember Tejeda.
Yes.
Councilmember Davis.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Shaw.
Yes.
Mayor Sosito.
Yes. I'm going to check. Mr. Moderator, do we have, did we have any public comment on Zoom?
Not so far, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to item J1, which is... Is a presentation by Tim Watkins of the San Bernardino County Transportation Authority on its role in how Measure I impacts transportation planning and improvements within the city. Mr. Watkins.
Good evening.
Good evening. He's going to get you started. Thank you so much for being here.
There's a number of other things that I'm supposed to roll through, I guess. These aren't me. Yeah, I'm after this. So here's me. If you're good. I just didn't know if you needed. So you're good. Okay. Good evening, Mayor.
Good evening.
Members of the council. My name is Tim Watkins. I'm with the San Bernardino County Transportation Authority, also known as SBCTA. I'm sure you guys know who we are, but maybe those in the audience don't. We are the Regional Transportation Planning Agency for San Bernardino County. We're led by a board of directors that's made up of elected officials from each of the 24 cities and towns in San Bernardino County, as well as the five county supervisors. And City of Redlands is represented currently by Mayor Sosito. We, a big part of what we do is the administration of Measure I, which is a half-cent sales tax here in San Bernardino County for transportation projects and programs. It's generated from transactions here in the county. It's for the county and stays and is administered right here in the county as opposed to going up to Sacramento or out to Washington, or who knows where it could end up at some point. So I find it to be a quality tool for improving transportation here in the county. I want to show you just a quick video, really quick, and then we'll talk a little bit about what it means locally.
San Bernardino County is on the move, and in thanks in large part to Measure I. First approved by 1989 and again in 2004, Measure I is a half-cent sales tax dedicated to improving transportation across the county. And over the years, it's delivered real results. From extending the SR210 freeway from LA County into Redlands, to easing congestion and cutting commute times, Measure I has made travel safer, more convenient, and faster for everyone. In our cities and neighborhoods, Measure I dollars have improved traffic signals, upgraded interchanges like SR60 and Central Avenue in Chino, and repaved local roads like Niskwali Road in Victorville, keeping local streets running smoothly. For public transit riders, Measure I brought the introduction of MetroLink to San Bernardino County, expanded bus routes, the introduction of zero emission bus and train options, and more accessible transit, connecting more people to jobs, schools, and healthcare. And it doesn't stop there. Measure I also supports bike lanes, pedestrian safety, and planning for future mobility, all while boosting our local economy by creating jobs and supporting construction projects across the region. What's another great thing about Measure I? It's locally controlled. That means... That means San Bernardino County and city leaders decide how funds are spent rather than being directed by outside agencies. Because of Measure I, transportation in San Bernardino County isn't just in keeping up, it's moving forward. Moving forward together with Measure I.
Thanks for indulging me for that. So Measure is, we're in our thirty-fifth year of the measure, introduced to the voters back in nineteen eighty-nine originally, and started in nineteen ninety as a twenty-year measure. Two thousand and four, over eighty percent of the voters extended Measure I through twenty forty, and it's been a significant contributor to our ability to improve transportation, how we move to and through this county and the mobility that we have. I can't imagine what this county would look like without Measure I as part of that process to improve transportation systems for the way that we manage our daily engagements. In front of you, and I believe there's some available for the public, but they're also online, is a form that kind of walks through some of the Measure I by the numbers, kind of taking a quick look at the measure. Since twenty-ten, the measure has generated about two-point-five billion dollars in transportation funding. About a fourth of that, nearly six-hundred-and-eighty million dollars, has been used towards regional transportation improvements and has leveraged state and federal resources to make an investment about two-point-nine billion in regional transportation improvements into this county. In addition to that, we've seen about seven-hundred-million dollars of that revenue since twenty-ten come back to the local jurisdictions through a formula process. I believe Redlands gets approximately two million annually from that to apply towards the transportation challenges of this city, for the local roads and streets projects that go on here. So it's really a significant contributor to the county. One of the things that, it doesn't just create projects, it creates jobs. And so roughly thirty-two thousand indirect and direct jobs have been generated from the dollars that fund transportation projects right here in this region. Regionally, we've seen improvements like, was mentioned on the video, the two-ten extension through Highland and the widening of the two-ten as it connects to Redlands. That's a recent project that was completed. But I-ten University improvements, I-ten Alabama phased improvements of the ramps, projects like at Tippi Canoe, if you go to the Costco area down in that area, or the widening of the two-fifteen. So there's been a significant amount of regional improvements that come from the measure. But in addition to that, there's been a lot of local investment as well. John and I were talking before the meeting and how much the measure contributes to the improvements of local streets and roads here. I live in Redlands, so I know firsthand that I think we have some of the best streets in the county, to be honest with you. I love what we've done here over time, but we see improvements to Redlands Boulevard, to Orange Street. I think there's some future signal considerations that will apply Measure dollars to it as well. And so it's a significant contribution, not just from the county as a whole, but local jurisdictions see the benefit as well. One of the cool things about the measure is that's actually a disciplined funding source as well. It's overseen by an independent taxpayer oversight committee that ensures that the way those dollars are used are in compliance with the ordinance and the strategic plan that the voters approved back in two thousand and four. So that's a critical part of that. We're also a very lean organization. Only one percent, not up to one percent of the measure can be used towards the administration of the measure. So it's very lean in the way that it functions that way. And I think one of the best parts, what we just talked about, is how dollars return back to locals jurisdictions as well to keep these, the local cities, moving in a positive way. Our focus tonight is just to introduce or reintroduce people to the measure. Some of the folks that are out there driving and benefiting from all these improvements weren't even old enough to vote at that time. This measure has been around for some time, but it's an investment that continues to produce fruit. But as we move forward, we want to hear from folks that we're still aligned with the vision of the public as it relates to transportation. And so on our website right now, go SBCTA dot com, the mouseful and I work there, slash Measure I, you can get to a full twenty-eight-page kind of brochure about everything that I've talked about in more detail, as well as access to a survey to give us input about where you'd like to see transportation go in the future, not just locally within your city, but regionally as a county as well. So we'd love to hear from you folks, as well as the folks that you represent, in that effort to move transportation forward. And that concludes my presentation, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Watkins. Does anybody have any questions or comments? Nope? Okay. Well, thank you very much. Appreciate the presentation. Okay, I received two public comments for item J one. First is Steve Rogers, Stephen Rogers? Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, thank you. Yeah, Stephen Rogers.
Mayor Sosito, Redland City Council, Steve Rogers, Church Street. I heard Tim, and I, it's too bad that he has left, that he wants to hear from the public about, he said something about that we're still aligned with their mission, this and that, and whatever. I was gonna, you know, suggest that Tim knows that I have not been aligned with their way of doing things for a long time, and it's really unfortunate that Tim's presentation didn't really outline the challenges that face Measure I funding, because that's gas tax money, okay? And so we all, we live here in California, and the state is requiring, of course, that a certain percentage of vehicles, all by some point in time, will be electric. And so that, what that means is that this pool of money, this fruit, is going to disappear, not right away, but it's going to gradually get smaller and will eventually disappear. And of course, they're talking about going, you know, they have this approved up to twenty forty, and certainly it's gonna disappear before then. They're talking about going to some other type of, you know, like vehicle miles traveled, you know, that they want to put a computer in our cars and charge us. So I just wanted to give everybody a reality check about what, you know, this is all about. And personally, I, you know, Sandbag, as it used to be called, and SBCTA, is a big waste of money, as far as I'm concerned, and basically Caltrans used to do the job much better. And all, you know, that used to happen was that they would distribute, you know, the funds to the locals. So really, this entity, this, I call it shadow government, and it's a farce. And they've approved HOV, turned HOV projects into express lanes, they've approved the train to Redlands without having our general plan in the right condition. And so they don't follow the law, and that's what they like, that's why they say they're independent. They don't have to answer to anybody, but they need to follow the law, because I'm going to the feds, because these projects I talked about are mainly federally funded. And so I see all this waste and abuse and fraud, and basically the feds need to wake up, too. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Moderator, do we have any public comments on the communication item?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. I'll close that item. Now, moving on to item K one, which is a public hearing to consider ordinance number twenty-nine eighty-five and resolution number eighty-seven hundred, to update the housing definitions, zoning regulations, and related municipal code amendments to implement the twenty-one, twenty-twenty-one, twenty-twenty-nine Housing Element Work Program. I declare this an open meeting, and I call upon the director for report, Mr. Dusatnik.
Thank you, Mayor. Brian Foote, our planning manager, will be doing this presentation.
Welcome.
Good evening, Mayor, councilmembers. Okay, great, thanks. Item K one, this is the proposed ordinance and resolutions to address the city's housing definitions and housing regulations. A little bit of background, as you know, the city adopted its twenty-twenty-one, twenty-nine Housing Element in October of twenty-twenty-two. It does include a work program, and that includes a number of code amendments, specifically Title seventeen subdivision regulations and also Title eighteen zoning code. There are roughly sixty-some specific items, discrete items, on the work program. We've completed roughly a third, about nineteen or twenty of them, they've been completed or implemented so far. And so these additional ten items on the work program will give us about half of the items that have been completed or implemented. So we're making good progress on this work program. Some overall policy goals in the Housing Element include increasing the variety of housing options available, reducing barriers to production of new housing, identifying and reducing governmental constraints, and that includes things like the zoning code, and to make housing options more accessible and affordable to different segments of our residents. This particular ordinance will address these specific items in the work program. There are ten listed here. These are just the program titles. I won't go into the details, but these items are, they're very specific, and they were intentionally included mainly by the State Housing Department of Housing and Community Development. So these are some, well, very important code amendments to maintain our certification of the Housing Element. To start with, adding or updating definitions, for example, definition of family, that was specifically identified by HCD during the preparation of our Housing Element. It's, could be rather restrictive unnecessarily, so the state is looking at us to update that definition. There are also some other definitions in state law now, for example, supportive housing, transitional housing, target population, employee housing, community care facilities. These are all specific terms in state law, so we want to update and align our zoning code with state law. Similarly, we're updating the multifamily residential zones. For example, supportive housing, transitional housing, employee housing, all of those would permit more than six persons. These are in the multifamily zones, and that's contrasted with the single-family zones, which would be limited to more than six residents, which, again, that aligns with state law. State law was updated probably twenty years ago to specifically identify the limit of six persons' residence, not including any employees or caretakers, to occupy a single-family house. There are several new code sections. These are the more sizable pieces of the ordinance, namely a new section to address agricultural worker and farmworker housing, a new section to address single-room occupancy housing in the multifamily zones, a new section to address what we call SB nine, Senate Bill nine, urban lot splits and two-unit housing developments, and then a section to address low-barrier navigation centers. In a nutshell, all of these new sections include specific development standards for these types of developments, as well as permitting procedures, appeal procedures, and the criteria or development standards that are necessary to approve these types of housing developments. There are some other technical details that need to be amended in the code, for example, not requiring a conditional use permit for a multifamily project in a multifamily zone. Whereas normally, multifamily projects are considered permitted by right in multifamily zones, currently the code has a threshold of thirty-five units or more that triggers a conditional use permit requirement, and HCD did not like that, and they've identified it as a constraint. It makes it unnecessarily difficult to approve more housing. So that's the type of thing that we need to amend in our code. Also, a couple of other very specific types of projects. For example, if a housing project with affordable units is proposed on a reused housing site, meaning a site listed in our previous Housing Element that was carried over and carried forward into the current Housing Element, then that approval process needs to be ministerial by right, as well as for supportive housing projects as defined in the government code there. There are some other ancillary code amendments, for example, post-entitlement permit appeals process. Again, this is to align with the current state law. And then a couple of other streamlining items that we wanted to include in the ordinance, for example, updating the minor exception permit process, for example, where an entitlement, a project goes before the planning commission and receives approval, and if for some reason that project needs a minor exception permit for fence or wall height, then it doesn't have to go back for a separate public hearing for a minor exception permit. It's already been approved by the, reviewed and approved by the planning commission. So that's a streamlining provision to not require that for the larger projects approved by planning commission. Also, to update the extension of time provisions for commission review and approval and conditional use permits, that would stay with the planning commission. The planning commission typically is the approving body for most of those types of projects, and so an extension of time should accordingly go back to planning commission for an extension. Also, updating the standards for accessory buildings. Right now, the code is rather sparse in terms of specific development standards for accessory buildings, so two new code sections for accessory, not two new, one new code section for accessory buildings, addressing these in the single-family residential districts, and then the existing code section for agricultural accessory buildings would be similarly updated. And lastly, for lot line adjustments, these refer to existing lots where they're adjusting in it, for example, an interior lot line. There's no creation of new lots. Typically, these are not subject to the MAP Act. If there's a limit of, I believe it's up to four parcels, can be approved with a lot line adjustment and be exempt from the MAP Act. And as far as I can recall, that's all of our lot line adjustment applications involve four of your parcels. So this amendment would allow administrative approval by the director. All of these amendments have been reviewed in detail by the planning commission. They reviewed this on April eighth, as well as May twenty-seventh of this year, and the commission unanimously recommended approval to the city council. The motion is there on the screen, and I know I've provided sort of a high-level overview, but if you have any detailed questions, I'm happy to answer any questions you have. Thank you.
Are there any questions from the council? I have one. What's the definition of a low-barrier navigation center? I followed everything else, but I didn't know what that one was.
Sure. That's, I guess, a term of art in state law. It's more commonly referred to as a homeless shelter, but it's not just a homeless shelter. It provides enhanced services. It provides housing units in addition to services onsite for the residents. So assistance, for example, completing tasks for daily needs, searching for employment, that type of thing.
Okay, that makes sense. Thank you. Any other questions or comments from? No? Okay, thank you so much, Mr. Foote. I have now move on to our public comments, Mr. Bruce Laykuk.
Good evening, councilmembers and city staff. First of all, I want to thank you for the hard work that went into this. It's a big deal. That's the good news. Bad news is, out of the nine-hundred-and-sixty-seven units of very low and extremely low housing that you are mandated to find a way to build before twenty-twenty-nine, that number is zero since twenty-twenty-one. Please, don't just put your names to this. Please, don't just put your names to this. Do something about the dire problem that we have with very low and extremely low affordable housing in Redlands. Thank you.
Thank you. Next public speaker, Stephen Rogers.
Honorable Mayor Salsedo, Redland City Council, Steve Rogers, Church Street. I, I just thought about something while I was rocking up here, that I had sent over communication related to this, this item, and, and I, I'd said it was a public hearing. Is this a public hearing?
Yes, I declared it as a public hearing.
Okay. So anyway, I am really concerned about this ordinance, and I really see it as an insult, let's just say, to the, the good folks that live and do business in Redlands, because it's not to our benefit. This is being done for the benefit of the city and the city staff, and, and, and the way I see it, it's really giving away our city to developers. It's, that's just a continuation of that. And, and, and that started, of course, with our not doing an adequate job on our general plan update. That, basically, that was a process that went on for probably close to ten, over, over ten years, I think, and finally resulted in a document being approved that had no technical, it had no technical backbone, let's just say. All the elements of a good general plan were left out. But our state only cares about one thing, and they, you know, dictate to us what we must have in the way of housing in our general plan. And so that is the only reason that the city is doing this, is because you're required to do it. It's not plan, because you don't. Our general plan is horrific. And, and I'm going to be going tomorrow after Tim came in here and explaining to them, all those folks over there, including Mario, how they have allowed Redlands to get to where we are. They're the, you know, regional transportation planning agency, and they sit back and watch us just do whatever we want, and we don't follow the law. And that's what I see happening with this ordinance. Basically, because the people, you know, wanted a small-town feel, and, you know, we voted down the special regulations that you guys were calling on, this is like retaliation against the community. And so please read the, the information that I sent in and, and digest that before you approve this. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Dusatnik, I had a question. Is the city mandated to, to build these different levels of income housing?
Yeah, that's a good point. I was, I was going to raise that. The, the state mandate is actually that we plan for and facilitate housing construction. We don't, the, the requirement is not to actually build it, where there's a lot of other factors that are beyond our control involved in building housing that, you know, financing and, and things that we can't control. So our, our role is to make sure we have land available, zoned properly, and that we don't have undue constraints that would get in the way of developers being able to build housing.
Go ahead.
I was just going to say, I have a follow-up question into Mr. Laycock's point. Do you have a sense of how many very low-income or low-income units are projected to be built based on our inclusionary housing policy? So those developers who have chosen to build those units rather than pay the in-lu fee?
We have approved a couple of projects that each have about twenty-five units of very low in them. We also had approved an agreement with an apartment complex developer that was intending to build fifty. That project is going through some changes in ownership, and we're not sure how, whether that's going to proceed or not. But at the moment, we have at least fifty that have been approved that should be moving forward.
So let me, yeah. So in other words, this is not the city's responsibility, other than making sure that it's a, they get a road, I mean, we don't have any undue necessary roadblocks for them to do it, but the bottom line is that we have to get a developer to come in and do those little, and, housing, is that correct?
It's, it's not our role to force developers to come in and build housing. Our, our role is to make sure we have land available that's zoned properly, and that we don't impose too many constraints through our zoning and other requirements that would prohibit the development of housing.
The bottom line, we have to get a developer willing to do that, and we're at the mercy of, of the developers, is that correct? Developers?
Developers and banks and everybody who's involved in constructing housing, contractors and, yes.
What if we don't get anybody by that time?
As long as we meet our requirements to have land available, you know, there's no penalty for not having housing built. There is a penalty if we don't, if we don't, you know, implement these programs that Mr. Foote went through that are in our Housing Element.
Thank you. I just wanted to make sure that people understood it wasn't the city's responsibility to build these housing. We still have to get the cooperation of the, of the developers, and, and we give as much cooperation as we can, but still, the bottom line, if we don't get a developer to come in and do those, we're, it's not going to happen, is that correct?
That's correct, yes.
Any other questions or comments? Mr. Moderator, do we have any comments on this item on Zoom?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Madam City Clerk, did we receive any written comments?
There were two written comments that were distributed, one of which Steve Rogers, who just spoke before you, and then Amanda Frye submitted one, and both of them requested that the item be tabled.
Thank you. Mr. Director Dusatnik, do you have any other comments or that you'd like to make?
No, I, I will just say, every, almost everything that we went through in this presentation related to some element of state laws that we were, that we were trying, making our codes comply with state law.
Okay, thank you.
I do have one real quick question. If we go along with the two suggestions, how are we able to improve this? I mean, it looks like it's pretty set. We're doing our responsibility, and if, and if we can't, maybe the bottom line is, I don't see the point. Can we improve this, is what I'm saying. In other words, if we delayed this, went back to staff, I, I want to make sure we cover everything, is basically, make sure that it's, it's done correctly legally. We're, we're, we're fine with this motion, is that correct? So we've?
Yes, we've worked with the city attorney's office very closely, and what we're presenting to you is our, our good code amendments that will help us fulfill our requirements and comply with state law.
So tabling is not going to improve the situation?
No.
Thank you.
I'll now close the public hearing, and what's the wish of the council?
Move to approve Resolution Number 8700 and find that the proposal is exempt from environmental review pursuant to Sections 1506-1B3 and 15378B5 of the SEQA Act Guidelines, and I move to introduce Ordinance Number 2985 and find that the proposal is exempt from environmental review pursuant to Section 1506-1B3 and 15378, I'm sorry, 8B5 of SEQA Act Guidelines.
Second.
Motion and second. Madam City Clerk?
Councilmember Barrage?
Yes.
Councilmember Tejeda?
Yes.
Councilmember Davis?
Yes.
Sorry. Mayor Protem Shaw?
Yes.
And Mayor Salsedo?
Yes.
Thank you. Moving on to Item K2, this is a public hearing to consider Resolution Number 8694, Delinquent Administrative Citation and Fine Report. I declare this an open public hearing, and a Resolution 8694 will adopt a delinquent administration citation fire report and submittal to the Auditor Controller of San Bernardino County for Lean Processing Facilities and Community Services, CROKER.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. This resolution is our annual report and submittal of the delinquent fines for administrative citations to the county auditor for recording of a special assessment on the 2526 tax rule. The properties identified in the report have been found in violation of various sections of the city's code. As mentioned in the staff report, property owners have been provided time to correct these violations or appeal the citations to administrative hearing. There is also a hardship waiver process available, and staff takes every opportunity to educate and work with the property owners to achieve compliance. If the City Council approves the resolution confirming the special assessments, the city clerk will file a notice of lean with the county auditor. That concludes my report.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from the City Council?
I see the fiscal impact is twenty-seven thousand, nine-hundred-and-eighty-five, so twenty-eight thousand. Is that just for our administrative costs to be able to do what we're doing? Is that correct?
That's the citation totals.
Citation total that they owe.
For this year.
This year?
Yeah, for that total report. So last year, it was sixty, sixty thousand, I think. This year is twenty-seven thousand. This is the sheet that's attached here to the back. That's the total for the citations.
Thank you.
I don't have any speaker slips. Mr. Moderator, do we have any public comment on this item?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Madam City Clerk, have we received any written comments on this item?
No comments received.
I'll now close the public hearing. What's the wish of the council?
Move to adopt Resolution Number 8694.
Second. That goes to the runner on that one. Madam City Clerk?
Councilmember Barrage?
Yes.
Councilmember Tejeda?
Yes.
Councilmember Davis?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Shaw?
Yes.
Mayor Salsedo?
Yes. Item passes. Moving on to Item K3, public hearing to consider Ordinance Number 2986 and designate 2025 Fire Hazard Severity Zones. I declare this an open 986 will amend Chapter 15.20 of the Redlands Municipal Code to designate the 2025 Fire Hazard Severity Zones as developed by the California Department of Forestry and Fire Protection, CAL FIRE, Fire Chief Sessler. Thank you, Mayor. At this time, we'll have our Fire Marshal, Vince Anderson, for the presentation.
Okay, thank you.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor and Council. Thank you for this opportunity to speak with you today. This council item is going to be very similar to K1, one of those requirements as municipalities all across California have to do, so we're doing our due diligence, and I'll walk you through what we have this evening. Next slide, if we can. We've got five, five slides for you for a little background on our ordinance here with our Fire Hazard Severity Zones. All right, wildfire severity zones. So they were established first in 2007. The California Board of Forestry Fire Protection, it's, it's established by Government Code 51178. The modeling and the actual areas that are surveyed are conducted by our colleagues at CAL FIRE and State Fire Marshal. And I like to read this section verbatim. The modeling is based on fuel loading, slope, fire weather, and other relevant factors, including the wildfire wind patterns that can result to quickly spreading fire. So we identify these areas, and this relates for our whole risk reduction approach. We identify hazards that we have, we put the mitigations in place, and it really starts with the awareness, and that's where this first portion comes from. Our slide we have here, this is our map from 2007, so primarily, primarily, it was limited to the southern part of town, our border with Riverside County there. And this was our 2007 version, and this slide here shows us our 2005 version. So updates were released in first quarter of this year, 2025, for the local responsibility areas. These are areas that are directly governed by any cities or counties, as opposed to being directly governed by the state incorporated areas. Largely, our map stayed majority the same. We made it out, I'd say, a little better than some of our other jurisdiction colleagues, so our south side still, we know that's our open space area that we put a lot of our mitigation efforts to. Some areas that were added were a little along that northern portion of the city with the Santa Ana Wash there, and some of that vegetation up there, we do keep a close eye on. One thing I do like to highlight, and second bullet point here, as a local agency, we don't have the opportunity to decrease these zones. We can only increase them. With that, it's actually chapered into Government Code Section 51179 here, so similar to Item K1, we acknowledge and, and put it in our, our ordinance there. Now with that, we'll be doing Item Number 1 tonight, introducing this ordinance for chaptering. At this time, Number 2, this only applies to, if I were building a new structure in one of these identified zones, the wildfire preparedness codes would come into play. As a quick snapshot of those, the roofs are a little more fire resistant. We look at double-pane windows. Anywhere that the embers might be flying, if they land, we don't, we give the least amount of fuel. And really, lastly, that landscape management, you know, any of those cypress and those really dense, oily vegetation that's not native to Southern California, we work with our landscapers and say, hey, that's, let's use our, our natural, natural vegetation that's here to Redlands. And with all that, even with these expanded zones, I passionately speak for all of my colleagues here in our wildfire protection. Our colleagues at National Fire Protection Association have a saying, "Fire is everyone's fight," and we really believe that here in Redlands. We work closely with our planning colleagues, our building, building safety colleagues and code enforcement as well. So we, we might be the ones in the matching, matching uniforms here, but it's truly a linked-arm effort. And we continue these mitigation outreach efforts to our areas that are part of the 2007 maps, as well as our, our current maps. With that, I have to take any, any questions, and we have the recommendation and the motion on the screen for you.
Any questions?
I have a couple of questions. Initials, it seems to be in District 5, and not only do I represent it, I live there as well. Reason I'm asking these questions, I think I've asked this before, you know, we had those fires in, in Malibu Canyon stuff that destroyed quite a few, and one of the complaints was the fire hydrants. We check those on a, how, how often do we check the fire hydrants for the pressure? Obviously, we have all of them go off, it's, it's going to be.
For that, for our hydrants, let me refer to our MUAD director, he's available for the question, but to that nature, our water tanks at Helen Court and wastewater, as well as the Tate plant on Highway 38, we specifically, a hundred-feet defensible space, we've been trying to line up resources for years, so that infrastructure, we actually just got completed this week. So that infrastructure protection is in place, and if my colleague, our director from MUAD is available, they maintain a little more of the public infrastructure itself, so we do coordinate closely though.
And I know the city, we, we've identified one new, new fire station we want to put, and we're looking for another one in the east, is that correct?
I believe so. Yes, sir.
You can see my concern. My, my district's been in the red ever since you've done this, and of course, now you've expanded to almost all of Redlands. So I just want to make sure that the, the public knows that we have a great fire department, and that we're on top of everything. That was my main goal, is to be able to assure everybody that we've done everything we can, just in case we have that, let's hope to God we never do, so.
Indeed, preparations that we hope we don't have to see.
Thank you.
Just a question. Obviously, this is, as you just mentioned, goes back to code as far as building new facilities, new structures. Is this a map as well? Because I think people are going to ask, that goes to insurance providers that they're going to use to evaluate existing structure risk and affecting rates and whatnot, or is that something you can speak to, or?
Sure, great question. And since it is a public document, and it'll be available for all the insurers, actuaries, underwriters, general public, and every agency in between. The official publication from CAL FIRE is it is intended to be a, a risk assessment, not an actuary tool. Will it likely be part of an influence? I would, I would imagine so. With that said, though, we've actually just met with our colleagues from the State Insurance Commissioner's Office just today, actually, and their modeling is changing as well, and part of our talking points were, we're, with this infrastructure protection, with the public fuel breaks we're being able to put in place, how do we get this data into those mapping, once so our, our local investment is reflected for our, our community members?
There are some places, for example, there's a, kind of a little piece there, which is a long wabash, which obviously, it's, that's undeveloped where wabash doesn't continue, but we do have housing that has been approved for that, and ultimately, will probably, we be, will be built there. So I didn't know if that would be, if that kind of thing gets taken into effect, into account. Once it's built, it's less likely to have that, you know, brush open area, and then it gets changed, or... then it gets changed, or?
Great question. And I would, I'll, I'll speak a little in conceptual. I would imagine, once the areas do get developed, those, the modeling, whenever that's, that next interval, there's really no set, like, interval when it's revisited. So two thousand seven, now to two thousand five.
It's a long time.
Yeah, the twenty-two twenty-five one. The Los Angeles area fires really were a catalyst there from marching orders from governor's office, hay state agencies, start the evaluation process. But with that, if we look along the two-ten, so kind of right next to the donut hole, with that area still having a lot of vacant land, that was one of the areas that popped up as, hey, wildfire could come down Santa Ana Wash, through the, you know, two-ten, and land here and start. Once that becomes developed, sure, do we still have our contents and interior fires that we protect with fire springs on that side? But as, as we've seen, other areas didn't really affect our jurisdiction, but from two thousand seven to two thousand five maps that were developed, you saw some of those reductions.
So we'll just have to see, for example, by the airport where there is development closer to the wash, because we're going to have developed homes there that are essentially, you know, going to be built to the right standards. And then we'll have to see if there's a way to, to maybe in five years, petition them to, to relook at it, because if we have to wait another, you know, twenty years, that's a, that's a huge time to get that reassessed, basically.
Absolutely. And with, with all of our, our property owners and our residents out there, as you're going through those insurance renewals or any of those cancellations, Fire Department and our community risk reduction, risk reduction division, we're, as much as we're, we're code enforcers, we're advocates as well, and we work a lot with our residents to say, hey, you've, you've done your, your fuels management, you've done your, your retrofits. Sometimes residents will get cancellations and are not even in one of the zones. And we'll say, hey, this, this policy might just be written on the zip code, and you're nowhere near the hillsides. So no, we, we advocate for our community as much as we, we collaborate with them.
You both did good work. Thank you.
I had a couple of questions. So on the modeling and notification, early notification of fires breaking out, so we had one break out this past weekend. How did that work? And I noticed there was a quick response to that.
Sure. So, and this fire was called the Smiley Fire. It was down just along the Riverside County borderline. This is one of our built-in success stories. I'll kind of expand this a little off the, the maps conversation here. But back in November twenty-twenty-five, we were able to work with the Alert California Network and the wildfire situational awareness cameras. We noticed we had kind of our, the San Timoteo Canyon branch was covered, the east side of Live Oak Canyon was covered, but this central area and along the county borderline wasn't there. So we had some surplus funds towards the end of the year. We were able to apply there, and this sunset cameras, one, two, and three, within simultaneously, as someone was calling nine-one-one to report it, all of our command staff were getting the notifications, hey, fire's been reported. And that's actually the third success story we've had just this past season.
Great, great. Now, thank you so much for that. The other follow-up question I had is, now that we have some of these new policies to put in place for building, I know that we have approved some housing projects in San Timoteo Canyon Road along Nevada on the east side and west side. Are they required to do with the new building materials?
They are, actually, yes. So the, the portion, I believe it's Trimark, the developer name might have escaped me, but yeah, so that's the, kind of the combined development of on the west side, that's on Level Endo side, the east side that's on our Redland side. Yes, that development, we actually did kind of steer ahead of it and say, hey, this map's going to be coming down the route. Let's all make the capital investment right now. And my, my kudos to the developer, they, they played along.
Okay. Well, thank you to the chief, and thank you to you, Fire Marshal Anderson, for all your hard work. Are there any, has there any other comments from the council? Hearing none? Have we received any written comments, Madam City Clerk?
No written comments received.
Okay. I don't have any public comments. Is there any? Yes, you did. I'm, my apologies, Bruce Lake Cook. These last-minute public comments on items. Welcome.
Council members and public safety staff. I appreciate the, this fire severity zone map. And I heard the Fire Marshal say that he was working with the state insurance commissioner, I believe. That's a pile of crap. And I'll tell you why. My home is in the lowest, it's in a gray area. I live on Gabrielle Way. It's in a very low fire safety zone. I mean, it's not a high-risk zone at all. And I was dropped by Nationwide Insurance with the putative reason being that I was in a high-fire hazard zone. So my question to you is, as a city. State representatives and with the state insurance commissioner, to keep insurance companies who haven't, and this was way before the LA fires, okay? How are you going to get them to not use fire hazard as an excuse for dropping people? Because that's what happened to me. I went to another insurance company, and they were, they originally said I was going to have to buy a special policy, a special high-hazard policy. But then when they looked at where I lived, they said, there's no reason why you need one. You're in a low, you're in a low hazard zone. So what that tells me is that Nationwide Insurance wanted to drop homeowners in Redlands. And if they dropped me where I live, I'm sure that there are others. And so what is your responsibility as a council to work with our state legislators and the insurance commissioner to make sure that insurance companies who want to exit the, the responsibility don't get to just pick and choose, cherry pick the, the safest properties and to let others that, in my case, I was a safe property according to every other insurance company, at least except Nationwide. And I called the state insurance commission, and they're like, well, they set their own rules, and they can do whatever they want, which is true, but sorta isn't good. So help me, help the city of Redlands residents protect us from unscrupulous insurance companies who are particularly now with the LA fires, looking for ways to exit the state of California and particularly the city of Redlands. Thank you.
Thank you. There are no other public comments. I'll now close the public hearing. What's the wish of the council?
I'll move to introduce ordinance number two-nine-eight-six.
Second.
Motion and a second.
Councilmember Barrage.
Yes.
Councilmember Tejada.
Yes.
Councilmember Davis.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Shaw.
Yes.
And Mayor Sosito.
Yes. Moving on to item L one, this is consideration of resolution eighty-six ninety-six, adopting the Climate Action Plan update, the Climate Action Plan of twenty-fifty, and the adoption of a negative declaration prepared for the project in accordance with the California Environmental Quality Act, Developmental Services Director De Satnick. Oh, and before I do that, I would like to have our city manager weigh in on a few comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. We have received some questions about what exactly the plan is doing, and we're going to get a lot of information from staff and the consultant in just a moment. But I thought it would be good to point out that if this plan were to be adopted by the city council this evening, what you're essentially doing is giving staff direction to bring back policies and regulations and, and other tools to achieve the goals in the plan. So by adopting this plan tonight, nothing actually changes for any of our citizens. There's no additional cost to them by adopting this plan. Later on, when we bring back the individual regulations for each piece of it, we'll thoroughly vet what costs we can estimate, if there are any, what cost they would be for the city. If it's purely internal to the city, then I would be bringing that back to the council and identifying that during budget time. If it's a regulation that we're doing to the building code or something like that, we would clearly identify what the impact to the public and what the perceived gains would be. So I just wanted to explain that to anyone who had questions about what the action was going to be tonight.
Thank you so much for framing the conversation around this item. I'll now turn it back to Director De Satnick.
Thank you, Mayor. This presentation's going to be done in, in two parts. Jasmine Sorato, our associate planner, will be, she's been our project manager on the Climate Action Plan. She'll be giving some background on the, on the project, and then turning it over to our consultant to go over the details in the plan. Jasmine, go ahead.
Yeah. Good evening, Mayor, and members of the council.
Good evening.
This is Climate Action Plan twenty-fifty. The city's first climate action plan was adopted in December twenty-seventeen, and it provided greenhouse gas reduction goals for the years twenty-thirty and twenty-thirty-five. For twenty-thirty, it set the goal for six metric tons of carbon dioxide equivalent, and for twenty-thirty-five, it set the goal of five metric tons of carbon dioxide equivalent. And it also allowed for the streamlining of environmental review for future development projects under the California Environmental Quality Act. The twenty-seventeen Climate Action Plan also included general plan policies and actions to reduce greenhouse gas emissions rather than specific reduction targets measures as listed within the current update. Many of these measures have been implemented via new development and city-led projects. Examples include additions of new bike lanes, sidewalks, light bulb replacements, and new solar requirements. As we will mention later, these efforts alone will not lead us to the previously, previously set target of six metric tons of carbon dioxide equivalent by twenty-thirty, which leads us to the update today. The two primary objectives for the twenty-fifty Climate Action Plan are to monitor and benchmark the progress towards the twenty-thirty and twenty-thirty-five target goals, and then also update the plan to reflect the latest climate science and state guidance. There have been several recent changes since the adoption of the twenty-seventeen Climate Action Plan. The most important of these is Assembly Bill twelve-seventy-nine, which was passed in twenty-twenty-two and set the state's goal for carbon neutrality by twenty-forty-five. The twenty-eighteen Senate Bill one hundred also required large electric utilities, including Southern California Edison, to make all retail electricity sales to be from renewable and zero-carbon energy by twenty-forty-five. This would virtually eliminate all electricity emissions in the future. And to take advantage of this change, Executive Order N seventy-nine twenty was passed in twenty-twenty and outlines the state's goals to transition the transportation sector to all-electric zero-mission vehicles by twenty-thirty-five. The Climate Action Plan was phased between four tasks. It began with the greenhouse gas inventory update and progress report, which we then conducted community outreach to receive input and use that input to develop climate action plan reduction strategies. And that leads us to the adoption tier today. On June eleventh, twenty-twenty-four, the Planning Commission reviewed the greenhouse gas progress report. The main focus of the meeting was to approve the new city greenhouse gas reduction measure of one metric ton of carbon dioxide equivalent for twenty-fifty, and to discuss potential ideas or strategies to reduce those greenhouse gas emissions. On July second, twenty-twenty-four, the same report was presented to city council, who ultimately supported the new twenty-fifty greenhouse gas reduction target of one metric tons carbon dioxide equivalent, and allowed us to proceed in this direction for the update. On October seven and nine of last year, we conducted two community workshops. One was held in person, and the other was held online. There was a total of six participants who attended in person and two online. We introduced the project, presented the progress report findings, and then received input from the participants using like the community's goals and priorities based on draft candidate strategies that were provided. From, sorry, from the start of the first workshop, a survey was also released from October seventh to the twentieth. Hundred and fifteen survey responses. The updated Climate Action Plan includes quantified and supportive measures, which includes collaboration with local organizations, expansion of sustainability programs, increased environmental education, and much more. Although the supportive measures are not quantified, which is why they were considered supportive, due to lack of available data, established quantification methodology, and potential for double counting, they were quantified, but they are as equally as important to ensure the success of the Climate Action Plan update. Also, please keep in mind, the following presentation by the consultant will be focusing on the quantifiable measures, which would lead us to the city's greenhouse gas reduction targets, and any elimination or changes to these measures may potentially impact the city's reduction targets. Given this in mind, what follows is a presentation by Deet and Batia, which is the same firm that produced our twenty-seventeen Climate Action Plan and the twenty-thirty-five General Plan. The presentation will be delivered by Claire Cussera, Associate, who's present here today. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, members of the council. My name is Claire Cussera. I'm an associate at Deet and Batia, and I'm here to present some additional information regarding the Redlands Climate Action Plan update. So just going over a brief agenda of the presentation, I will go through a brief project timeline, present the overview of the cap requirements, and then move on to the summary of the preferred strategy to meet our GHG reduction targets. So the purpose of today's presentation is to present the cap for adoption by city council. As of today, we have completed a public outreach, received feedback from the Planning Commission, and published the public review draft of the cap, along with its corresponding sequoia analysis. So in our last presentation to the Planning Commission, we demonstrated how current progress towards the city's GHG reduction targets is not on track, and there is a significant emissions gap that needs to be addressed, especially in the long term to support state goals. So as you can see in this graph, Redlands is currently at a seven-point-seven metric tons of CO2 equivalent per capita in twenty-twenty-two, and that's an increase from our twenty-fifteen baseline. So accounting for state actions, which is that adjusted business-as-usual line to the right on the graph, we project that per capita emissions would be reduced to about four-point-eight metric tons of CO2 by twenty-fifty. Our preferred strategy outlines a path to reduce the city's per capita emissions down to one-point-zero metric tons of CO2 by twenty-fifty. So again, this slide is reiterating the cap targets for twenty-thirty and twenty-fifty compared to the projected trajectory Redlands is heading. And the final row shows the additional emissions reductions needed to achieve the targets. So as you can see here, Redlands needs still over three-hundred thousand metric tons of CO2 equivalent reductions by twenty-fifty in order to meet the carbon neutrality goals. So we've drafted a preferred strategy that achieves the proposed reduction target of one-point-zero metric tons of carbon dioxide equivalent by twenty-fifty, but another important thing that we've considered are the co-benefits of these measures and actions. So climate action can have multiple benefits that help the city achieve other objectives and reflect community values. So these include environmental quality, cost savings, public health, environmental justice and equity, economic development and job creation, as well as climate resilience and adaptation. So in addition to actions that have the most effect on reducing GHG emissions, these strategies also reflect community priorities and considerations as well. So as you can see in this table here, we have some major sectors of opportunity available to reduce emissions in Redlands. In particular, these sectors include transportation, natural gas, and solid waste emissions. As you can see in the adjusted business-as-usual column with the preferred strategy, there are significantly fewer emissions in these sectors compared to the justice, adjusted business-as-usual column without the cap's preferred strategy. So I will now highlight some of our key proposed actions and the preferred strategy that makes some of these largest emissions reductions. So transportation is our sector with the biggest opportunity to reduce emissions in Redlands. One such goal is TR one A, which is to increase the number of public EV chargers in the city. So we've also detailed in the cap specific performance metrics and timelines with tangible actions in order to track progress. So for example, for TR one A, this would be seven-hundred-and-sixty EV chargers citywide by twenty-thirty and thirty-three-hundred chargers by twenty-fifty. Moving on to TR two A, it's to limit idle land of construction, industrial, and commercial off-road equipment. Further, the cap aims to improve the pedestrian and bicycle networks, as well as implementing transit supportive roadway treatments. So this would involve implementing actions outlined in the Sustainable Mobility Plan that prioritize safety and connectivity, especially in low-income and disadvantaged neighborhoods. So all these measures together lead to reductions of over two-hundred-and-sixty thousand metric tons of CO2 equivalent by twenty-fifty. Moving on to the built-in environment, which is one of our other key sectors for emissions reductions, one such of our measures is BE one B, which is developing a shared solar generation system in the city. BE two A is related to existing large commercial and multifamily buildings of thirty thousand square feet or more to conduct energy assessments. BE two B regards existing residential buildings undergoing remodels and additions, meeting certain criteria to also meet minimum energy savings. And I'll provide more information regarding these two measures in the following slides. And finally, BE three A is to implement a city lead-by-exemple plan. And finally, BE-3A is to implement a city lead-by-exemple plan to increase energy efficiency in city facilities. So together, this brings us to nearly 40,000 metric tons of CO2 equivalent reductions by 2050. So some more details on BE-2A, it requires, like I stated, existing large commercial and multifamily buildings of 30,000 square feet or more to conduct energy assessments. But I'd like to highlight that this only affects buildings between 30,000 square feet and 50,000 square feet, as state regulations already require this measure for buildings of 50,000 square feet or greater. So as of now, this measure would only affect 35 additional buildings in the city. It also assumes only voluntary upgrades for building owners. BE-2B regards existing residential buildings undergoing remodels, additions, meeting certain criteria to also meet minimum energy savings. So in order to meet our cap goals, it will be necessary to modify some of our existing building stock with energy efficiency measures. There are several other cities in California that have implemented similar ordinances. So for example, the city of Encinitas requires existing single-family residential buildings or alterations with a permit value of $50,000 or higher to include any one energy efficiency measure from a predetermined menu of options. So again, there's some flexibility here, and the city can choose a criterion that would work best for the local setting. It is estimated that this would only add an additional 2% to 3% of the cost of future remodels and retrofits. It's also important to note that as this cap was drafted, the criterion was still to be defined and adopted in a REACH code. However, because AB 306 was passed just last night, it puts a moratorium on REACH codes until 2031. So BE-2B would be a measure that only encourages, instead of requires, owners of residential buildings undergoing remodels to implement energy efficiency measures, at least until the REACH code moratorium ends in 2031. So here's an example of the flexible menu of options for single-family homes in Encinitas. As you can see, there are a range of measures here, some of which are quite affordable. And here's just a continuation of that table. So moving on to solid waste, we have several measures aiming to accelerate the solid waste diversion goals to divert 75% of organic waste in the city, as well as to adopt a food waste prevention and edible food recovery policy. So this measure aims to recover 20% of currently disposed edible commercial food for human consumption. And with all these measures combined, we will see a little over 6,000 metric tons of CO2 equivalent reduced by 2050. Moving on to carbon sequestration and adaptation, all these measures involve the urban green space, so these are to update the street tree policy and increase the urban tree canopy in Redlands, use compost for urban forest planting and maintenance, as well as allow for community gardens in as many districts in the city as possible. And finally, water and wastewater, these are all supportive measures that cannot be quantified, either due to lack of available data or potential for double counting, but many of these measures and actions involve implementing existing plans, such as the Urban Water Management Plan, the Water Systems Master Plan, and the Wastewater Master Plan for Operational Efficiency. Other measures require water efficiency requirements in new developments and explore options to reduce prevalence of water-intensive ornamental lawns. So in summary, preferred strategy measures that can be quantified are included in this table. There are also additional supportive measures in the preferred strategy that cannot be quantified, as I stated, due to lack of available data or potential for double counting, and they are excluded from the summary table. But overall, as we can see here, implementation of the preferred strategies GHG reduction measures is expected to be sufficient to meet the city's cap targets for both 2030 and 2050. And this concludes my presentation. Thank you. I believe Jasmine has a few more slides.
Thank you.
It's just the motion if the City Council determines that staff recommendation is appropriate, the following motion is provided.
Thank you. Any questions from the council to staff or to the consultant?
Yes, I do have questions. Thank you, by the way, for the work you've done with this, supportive of climate action of some type for our community. I had a question regarding, I guess, from the beginning to where we are now. How do we identify the target, or how did we identify the target of, it was at six that we wanted to reach?
So the 6.0 metric tons of CO2, that's from the previous cap. And maybe Jasmine has more details of how that goal was formed, but we've adjusted those goals now to reflect state legislation as well as CARP's 2022 Scoping Plan, which recommends 1.0 metric tons of CO2 equivalent per capita by 2050. So that's why we adjusted our...
Six doesn't matter. We have to be at one.
Yes.
Yeah, so that's beside the point. In making those calculations and taking all this stuff into consideration, is the work to calculate where we get to or how we get to the 1.0 metric tons, is it involve just the built environment of the city of Redlands, the city limits of Redlands? Does it take into consideration Route 210, Route 10, and the traffic load on that?
It solely focuses on the planning area of the city of Redlands.
I just wanted to make sure that that's what it was about. Thank you very much.
Of course.
I did have some more questions here. You answered one and two. Oh, and this is probably for staff, so I may ask a question, and maybe for staff, and maybe for the requirement for home improvement during remodels, how would that affect our historic district? How would that affect houses that are considered historic and they don't want to remodel certain parts and, you know? Would they be...
You know, if we were to implement that, there's a whole menu of different options that you could pick from, and many of which would not affect the historic integrity of the house. You know, adding insulation, for instance, doesn't really affect the historic integrity. You may not want to replace a single-pane window with a double pane that could affect it, but there's plenty of other options to increase your...
Yeah, but they probably should change it, but that's just my opinion. I understand that, you know, homes want to be historic in nature, so... So I'm looking for, rather than adding costs to folks, finding policies that we can adopt that encourage or actually front or provide the cost, the funding source for making improvements to homes. And I know a lot of this is, if someone's making a remodel, if someone's doing a remodel, then they would, if we adopted a certain policy about permitting or whatever, the thresholds, then, and only then, would they be responsible for making these improvements. It's my opinion that I think if we had some sort of mechanism for identifying funds from some other, from some source, to encourage that to occur, you know? You know? So I hope you understand what my statement was there. If not, I can talk to you offline about that. Yeah, identifying some... Let's see. So on your calculations, did it take into consideration hybrid vehicles, for example? Is it only electric vehicles?
It did take into consideration hybrid vehicles up until the point where we have legislation that requires EV vehicles, I believe, by 2035. So we do have that in our calculations of like the slow transition from hybrid to EV vehicles eventually.
I just wanted to make sure about that. You answered the other question there. And then there's also policies I think we should look at with respect to the tree canopies. I noticed around town in a lot of commercial spaces, and I've mentioned this before, a lot of tree lacing is going on, and that basically cuts back, you know, a tree to a certain point where sometimes it's not even a tree anymore. In some cases, there are some commercial properties that take out the tree and don't replace them, so some kind of policy we should look at to make sure that commercial spaces are actually replacing the trees that they're damaging or, you know, the green areas that are supposed to be green remain green, because I'm noticing now that with the water, a reduction in water landscaping that many places are moving to, they're actually pulling trees. So if we could look at that possibility of, you know, see what we can do policy-wise in the city so that we can make sure that our commercial spaces that create a bigger heat island effect are addressed through this policy.
Is there? Before I go to public comment, Director Dezadig, do you have any final comments? Or consultant or Jasmine?
I just wanted to reiterate that this bill that was actually just passed last night, it's been floating out there, and we weren't sure whether it was going to pass or not. There was actually quite a lot of opposition to it, but apparently it was tagged on as a trailer to a much larger housing bill that the governor signed last night. And just to reiterate, that prohibits the implementation of anything called a REACH code, which requires more strict energy efficiency than is currently mandated in the building code. So that program that was in the presentation and is in the plan will be implemented through encouraging the, through educational materials and whatever else we can do to help people understand that there's a benefit to adding energy efficiency improvements to their project.
And I do, one other thing, former council member, oh my gosh, why is it, John James sent us a letter. He's an engineer in this space and pointed out the capacity of our local grid, and I'm wondering to the extent to which the calculations took that into consideration.
Yes, there is some consideration into that. One second. So I do know that SCC is still looking to expand their grid and distribution systems, and that's something that has been on their minds, especially with our EV charger target. So we're looking at improvements that will continue through 2015. I think the utility providers recognize the importance of the electrical grid and the prevention of blackouts and other issues in the future.
Thank you for answering the questions.
Anybody else? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
First public comment is Ron Running.
Evening, Mr. Mayor and Members of the Council. Thank you for this opportunity. Ron Running, Redlands resident and member of the ANCA Redlands Group. It's been a pleasure to participate in this process in developing the cap, and I'm here to support the adoption of the cap. However, I do have some concerns and issues with the current plan. We saw with the past plan that was rather modest, that we didn't even achieve our goal, and we went the opposite direction. So I think we really need to take this new plan seriously and do everything possible to achieve our goals. Some of the concerns that I have is that over 70% of the plan's goals are targeted for just having more EV chargers. And I'm skeptical of how effective that really is. Most single-family homes have the ability for chargers right now. The problem would be in multifamily, but to have 70, over 70% of our achievable goal rest in this one measure, I think is a stretch. I'm in favor of increasing the incentives that you mentioned, that I think it's through education, through the natural, explaining to people the benefit of energy efficiency in their homes and likewise. But I see there's a national trend against EV vehicles. We've seen the incentives for EV vehicles diminish over time, so I'm skeptical that we'll be able to rely on that one measure only. I also would like to say that we need to consider the community choice aggregation of providing Redlands residents with the opportunity to reach out for more solar opportunity to help us achieve our goals. But I thank the city staff for the time and effort that they put in to produce the plan, and I hope we can go forward with it. Thank you.
Next speaker is Dick Cornet.
I prepared some written comments, so I would stay on track here, but Mayor and City Council members, thank you for the opportunity to provide comments on the Climate Action Plan 2050. We submitted our detailed comments yesterday, actually, and they're on the record now. My name is Dick Cornet. I am president of the Board of Directors of Accelerate Neighborhood Climate Action. As you know, ANCA is a nonprofit with a mission to build climate-resilient communities neighborhood by neighborhood. We have been active in Redlands for the last three years and have initiated several climate action programs in partnership with the city, the University of Redlands, the Inland Empire Resource Conservation District, local environmental groups, and ESRI. The increasing heating of our planet and resultant climate change is a crisis that needs our immediate actions. For too long, we have ignored the advice of scientists, and we must drastically reduce our carbon emissions to have a sustainable, livable world. ANCA believes that we need to immediately implement multiple carbon reduction strategies now. We have reviewed and provided detailed input during the preparation of the cap by participating in all the community workshops and online survey. Our input is included in the strategies that have been summarized in Section 4 of the cap, including the 12 greenhouse reduction quantifiable measures and the 46 supportive measures. We understand that the preferred strategies in the cap include both the quantifiable measures and the supportive measures, the 46 supportive measures, and we appreciate the many opportunities that we have been given to provide input into the cap. We applaud the city in committing in the cap to the actions that support the state's priority efforts to address climate change by electrifying transportation, decarbonizing buildings, and reducing vehicle miles traveled. As expected in Redlands, as you've heard, transportation is by far the highest emissions, with the built environment second. As mentioned by the last speaker, we are very concerned that the emphasis on strategies for conversion to zero-emission vehicles will fall short of the assumed 77% total reductions that are shown in the table that was just shown to you. We are also concerned about the estimated built environment emission reductions of 11%, especially implementing the electrification of existing residences unless significant rebates and tax incentives are available. Therefore, many of the supporting measures, not just the required ones or the preferred ones, therefore, many of the supporting members will need to be implemented to meet the reduction goals. Can I continue?
You may finish your thought.
Okay. We have recommended prioritizing the 46 supportive strategies. A few of the ones that we think are most important are the Citizens' Choice Aggregate, supporting strategies that are mentioned as lead-by-exemple, having the city decarbonize city buildings, measures that are directly under cities' control, such as solid waste reduction, portable water and water treatment reductions, including the reduction in the use of single-use plastics and the urban forestry that was mentioned. We appreciate the city including in the cap a monitoring plan with yearly reviews and update of the progress being made in reducing emissions. Rather than a static plan, adjustments can be made regularly to ensure compliance.
Are you almost done?
Yes.
Thank you.
We also applaud the city for hiring a sustainability coordinator, and we already met with her and have established a working relationship. In summary...
Thank you, Mr. Cornet.
ANCA recommends the city approve the Climate Action Plan 250 with the consideration of our suggestions. ANCA stands ready to provide support to implement these strategies and working closely with your sustainability coordinator. Thank you very much.
Bobby Garrity.
Good evening. Ms. Mayor, members of the council. Uh, I'm here today in, um, absolute support of the city adopting the Climate Action Plan. Uh, climate change is perhaps the single greatest issue of our time, uh, and our basic livelihood depends on a stable and healthy climate. I support the solutions listed in the plan, uh, but I do also want to highlight something very important that is missing from it. The UC Berkeley Cool Climate Lab, uh, calculated the most impactful things that cities can do to reduce emissions. And for every city in California, they calculated the exact things which would have the most impacts, and specifically those four which local governments have the ability and the power to influence. And for Redlands, the number one recommendation by far was to increase infill housing and housing density. This is because increasing density reduces VMTs, vehicle miles traveled. The more things, people, friends and family you have that are closer to you, the less you have to drive to go to all of those things. And as the, uh, plan showed, transportation is two-thirds of our current emissions. It also helps the viability of transit. The more riders, the more customers we have near transit stops, the stronger our transit systems can be. Greater density also helps with the built environment energy use of the buildings themselves. Higher-density building types are more naturally efficient than lower-density ones because they have less exposed surface area relative to the amount of interior surface area, less air conditioning and heating spend. And of course, newer buildings are more efficient overall because they're, they're newer, built right, and more likely to have electric instead of fossil fuel appliances. And finally, they also reduce our land consumption. The more infill density we build within our cities, the less ex-urban sprawl we need outside our cities. Uh, and that also reduces habitat destruction and protects native species and other things. And I want to emphasize that while I'm absolutely supportive of this plan, uh, as the manager mentioned, this is just a plan, and the implementation of these strategies are where emissions are actually going to be reduced. And I recognize that the costs of those implementations are going to be the main points of controversy, so let me emphasize the economic component here, that increasing built density helps us economically. Because the more housing supply we have, the lower rents are, the lower home prices are, and the more affordable everybody's lives are. It also helps on the city's end, too. The more taxpayers we have in a given area, the more revenue we get for the same amount of infrastructure. Thank you.
Michael Paisner.
Hello, Michael Paisner. I guess it's time to, uh, let the cynic have his say. I want to thank the city for this report. I enjoy reading science fiction, and this absolutely qualifies. How do I know this is fiction? Because I saw this show a year ago and the plot hasn't changed. You document how our greenhouse gas emissions have been increasing over time, but will somehow magically decrease in the future. And how will these magical decreases be achieved? According to the report, you're counting on state regulations on utilities and a large transition to electric vehicles. Maybe this should be classified as a comedy because you can't be serious. As was previously described, the transition to electric vehicles is already slowing, and you're counting on utility companies to do the heavy lifting for you? You really think they won't find some way to wiggle out of that requirement? By approving this report, you are betting on a direction you advocated against just a few weeks ago. I'm sorry, you don't get to write letters to AQMD opposing their efforts to phase out gas appliances and then make climate projections that don't include gas. If you want to achieve climate goals, you actually have to be willing to make some tough choices, which this council has demonstrated you are not willing to do. When you appoint developers instead of environmentalists to the planning commission, you make your priorities crystal clear. Yes, I did notice your sleight of hand appointing a developer to the planning commission. But getting back to this report, I have to ask, do these projections include the warehouse on Tennessee Street, which will inevitably come back, and the increased diesel truck traffic for that warehouse? Is that projection in, in here somewhere? Cause I couldn't find it. And we all know that warehouse and those associated diesel trucks are coming. Well, you've heard my review of this environmental theater, so I'll let you proceed with the rest of the performance. Just so you know, this report is supposed to be nonfiction rather than fiction. Thank you.
Bruce Laykuk.
Council members, city staff. I was lucky, I got solar prior to NEM 2.0 being phased out. You need to advocate with the Public Utilities Commission and your state legislators to roll back NEM 3.0 to NEM 2.0 numbers or something closer. What NEM 3 did was cut the amount that a householder who puts in solar receives for the excess power they generate, from about 23 to 35 cents per kilowatt hour to five cents. That had a drastically negative effect on solar companies in the state of California, number one. And number two, we have a, this goal to be energy neutral by 2045, and yet we have a Public Utilities Commission doing one thing while this, while the governor is writing an executive order to do something else. So you need to work to get those in harmony with each other. That's something you can do as a city more effectively than I can do as a householder. Number two, 3,300 public EV chargers? I don't think so. You need to get a clue. Now, 3,300 home EV chargers? Yeah, find a way to encourage that because that's what, I've got a, uh, hybrid electric that I can plug in, and I put in a home charger in my own home. Do that, that's what people are going to do. And if they've got solar, they basically get free electricity for their car. Three. Oh, we already said that, sorry. Four, if you do this, if you, if you implement a real action plan, not fantasy, we're going to lower the fire hazard in Redlands because one of the things that the Climate Action Plan will do is lower greenhouse gases, lower the energy in the, in the atmosphere, and reduce the fire hazard in the, in the surrounding parts of the city. You should incentivize businesses converting to solar power. You should incentivize home solar generation. And you should lobby the state and CPUC not to bow to Southern California Edison and PG&E. That's what you can do. The other thing you need to do, you must do, is measure and report progress. Because if you don't measure it, it's not going to happen. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, uh, Mr. Moderator. Do we have any, uh, comment on this item?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. What's the wish of the council?
I have, um, I have some comments. And I want to say, first of all, thank you so much, phenomenal public comments tonight on this item. Um, I want to say as both a council member and someone who is deeply committed to bold and inclusive climate action, I want to express my strong support for the adoption of the Climate Action Plan 2050. And I also want to highlight where we must go further if we're serious about delivering on climate justice, public health, and long-term sustainability. I'm grateful to our community partners, especially ANCA, and also my Climate Policy Council for their thoughtful, grounded input and for organizing neighborhood-level climate resilience programs over the last several years. Their comments rightly emphasize urgency, accountability, and equity. We are facing a climate crisis, and the science tells us we have no time to waste. This plan rightly sets ambitious targets aligning with the state's carbon neutrality goal by 2045, and aiming for one metric tons of CO2 per capita by 2050. That's the right direction, but we must be honest about the gap between our current path and what's needed to get there. I would like to highlight four key areas where I believe we need to enhance the plan and commit to bolder follow-through. Number one, make building decarbonization equitable. We need to do all we can to level the playing field, especially for those in older homes or working-class neighborhoods. We need to establish cost thresholds and hardship exemptions under future reach codes after the moratorium. Prioritize rebates and incentives for lower-income residents and renters, similar to what we do with our Utility Bill Assistance Program. Create a public climate upgrade resource hub, could be a great opportunity to use ESRI technology to connect people with funding, contractors, and support. Number two, back this plan with some real resources. Most measures are labeled moderate costs, but we need to be realistic about staff, grants, and general fund investments. That includes proactively pursuing state and federal grants, expanding partnerships with EV providers and clean tech innovators, aligning our capital improvement plan to fund climate projects across sectors. The sustainability coordinator role is a great and exciting step, but one person can't do this alone. Number three, improve transparency and public accountability. The plan calls itself a living document, that's good, but it also says emissions will be inventoried every two to three years and progress reported every five. That's not enough. We need biennial GHD emissions updates, a yearly progress report to council and the public, a dashboard that lets residents track how we're doing in real time. You can't manage what you don't measure, and residents deserve to know how we're doing, and I would like for us to be a bit more ambitious on those reporting goals. Number four, prioritize underserved areas for climate investment. Whether we're talking about urban tree planting, EV charging, or waste reduction, we must make sure underserved communities benefit first. That means prioritizing tree planting in the north side, where it cools neighborhoods and improves air quality, ensuring EV chargers are placed where renters, families, and commuters can access them, not just in commercial zones, supporting local solutions like community gardens, repair cafes, and carpool programs, and investing in green transportation, like an electric shuttle for Redlands. Further research, how we might bring community choice energy and greater solar initiatives to our city, uh, and additionally, we should consider significantly reducing single-use plastics. In closing, I want to reiterate that I strongly support this Climate Action Plan. It's comprehensive, thoughtful, and aligned with the science, but if we want to be a model, if we want Redlands to lead in this region and protect our community for generations, we must embed equity, invest in implementation, and commit to transparency from day one. This is our moment to show that local government can rise to meet global challenges. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. What's the wish of the council?
I just have another, another comment. I mean, um, we have to find some way of funding this, and I think we should sit down with the city manager and say, okay, uh, how can we implement some of the suggestions that you made? Um, I'd like to single-use, um, plastics and stuff. We're going to be sending some educational, uh, material to people real soon, maybe within the couple of months, on, on reducing that. It has to start somewhere, and it's very frustrating. I, I don't know about you, but you look at six o'clock at night, uh, well, between four and seven, the 10 freeway. It was bumper-to-bumper people. I mean, there's no two ways about it. We could do whatever we want here, okay? And I don't suggest that we don't, we have to start somewhere, okay? But it's very, very frustrating. They're building all these homes in Beaumont and Banning, and people don't work at Beaumont and Banning, they work other places, uh, in the, mostly in the West End. And it goes through, and of course, you know, how, again, maybe I'm, I'm showing my frustration because we, I want to do whatever we can, but we have to find a way to, for the, um, the state cooperate. We have to put some more pressure on, on, um, on Edison. I have solar, okay? And it was a good deal, okay? Um, I have a, a electric field, and I have my own charger in there, so I've done what I can, but I still got a bill for $3,000, um, for the whole year, which is almost what I paid before I had the solar. So somebody's, now, I'm not going to say what we're getting, but, um, I'm not being kissed either, so, um, it's just, it's, it's very, very frustrating, and, and again, um, I'm just blowing off some steam here, I, I fully support this as well. Uh, I think we should do more of solar. I know we're looking into, uh, transferring, uh, or changing some of the, um, uh, the buildings in the solar. I made a suggestion that our new museum that we open up had solar, but I'm not sure how far that's going to go. I know it's been, uh, wired for that, but whether or not we're going to do it or not, it, I'll, I'll see when, when we believe it. Again, I'm just very, very frustrated. We, we know we have to do this, and we just can't, uh, we have to find some way to pressure everybody. We have San Bernardino, and you know, they're three times our size. It's very, you know, it's, it's very, I don't know. Again, I'm, I'm, I'm short of words, I just, it just really discouraging because we're doing what we can, and we're not getting cooperation from any other municipalities, it seems like. Um, I'm not saying that we should abandon that, but maybe we find some way that we could pressure, uh, other areas to kind of adopt what we're trying to adopt here. It's very, very important, and not just for us, it's for our future, you know, my kids, my grandkids. And so it's, you know, I guess this is a start, but we have to find some other ways, and we have to sit down and say, okay, how can we finance that? Because you use the taxpayers' dollars, um, to try to, um, to implement some of the things that, um, Councilmember Davis suggested. So, anyway, I spouted out, said my part, what can I say? I support this measure.
AirProta?
Along, along the same lines, um, I think that there is pieces of this that are, that are sending us in the right direction. When you talk about trees and tree canopies and improving, you know, our urban forest, um, there's things that, that we can make some, some headway on. How quickly we'll make that and the overall impact on that, um, we'll have to see. The solid waste diversion piece, obviously that's going to take, uh, the city getting on board, and, and that's obviously going to, you know, be an expense, and I think that we can, um, start to plan for that, and then we will be able to take advantage of that as we get closer to that 2050 piece. But my concern is back to what some people have mentioned relative to the, to the EV charger piece and the amount of, um, I don't know, I mean, we're, we're basically putting all of our eggs in the basket of the EV charging piece. And if you look at some of the numbers, and I am by no means, uh, you know, uh, an expert on EV chargers or on the grid or anything else, but, you know, we've been told by Edison that right now the capacity isn't, uh, isn't there, um, to really even, even do the things that we want to do now. And when you talk about EV chargers, and the number that I have is that we've got 550, give or take, um, chargers here in the city. Um, that's, it's now halfway through 2025, and we're supposed to have 760 by 2030. So that's 214 right there in the next four and a half years, and, uh, it's taken us how long to get to 546? And now, let's say that 20 years beyond that, we're going to add another 2,500? I think, I mean, that's a stretch. It's a stretch for where we're going to put them and how we're going to do that and who's going to do it, and then how we're going to power them. And so I think that, um, I'm absolutely supportive, and I, and I read the language specifically, and it does say to try to meet the new GHD reduction targets. But I don't know that it, we've got to be cautious about the fact that if we, if we say we're going to do that and we know there's no way we can do it, then, then why are we saying that, you know, this is the route that we're going to go if it's a, if it's an unattainable goal? Um, so how that works, you know, Charlie, you mentioned about how this, what a yes vote means, and then how we move forward from here. I guess my question back to you is, okay, conceptually, yes, we want to get there, but, but what we have here, there is no way we are going to get there. And so what is that? How, how do we craft that to say, yeah, we, we certainly want to head down the path, but we, we don't have what we need here to, to get us to that point? It's not, it's unattainable.
I, in my opinion, it's written appropriately because, like you said, it says try. It, it's, it's a roadmap, it's aspirational, the targets that, that were given to us were assigned to us by the state, and as usual, they're, they're good at giving us targets, but they're not good at giving us the money. So the reality is, as you said, Mayor Bar, I'm, I'm sorry, Councilmember Barich, is without funding, it's really, you know, we're just not going to go very far. And so short of a tax measure, for example, or some other way of funding this, for example, or some other way of funding this through the federal government or what have you, we're going to fall short.
But I don't think, I don't think we're going to buy our way out of it either with funding. I think that it's, you know, we need buy-in, we need people to be on board, we need to make changes to the way we live and the way we do things, so it's more than just a funding piece, and I, again, I'm fine with the language, I just, it's concerning that those metrics that we want to use to achieve something or even try to get there, we know won't work, and we're saying, yeah, let's buy into that, we think that we can get 70% out of this out of EV chargers, and we know that's not going to happen. So we're setting ourselves up for failure from the get-go.
Yep.
So that's, that's my question for you. If that's a question, is how do we?
Well, can I address the EV charger thing? That number included private chargers as well, not just publicly accessible chargers. So I think when you start to include, you know, single-family homes and multifamily properties and commercial properties, and also, and to keep in mind, this is a long-term goal, and as we transition, as more and more people start buying electric vehicles, it's going to drive the demand for chargers way up. You may see things like gas stations starting to put in charging systems or new business models that don't exist right now, so I wouldn't.
But to your point, and I agree, but we have a survey here that 54% of the people said that they're likely to never or most likely not go down the EV vehicle route, and then you've got, you know, obviously, we're going to be in litigation, but you have this competing piece from the federal government that says, okay, we don't have the 2035 requirement, or they want to get rid of that. So there are a lot of variables there that we have to, you know, at least, you know, acknowledge that they, that those are obstacles.
That's true, and I will say this plan was written with the assumption that the state, the state mandates that in 2035, no EVs will, no ICE vehicles will be sold, that that was going to be the policy. If, obviously, if that doesn't happen, that's going to slow the transition to electric vehicles and impact the, you know, our plan as well.
There are a lot of things we can do as a community as far as, so if, let's say, status quo stays the same and we end up having more electric vehicles, there are policies such as permitting where we can either eliminate the cost of somebody who wants to install a charger, a home charger, we can do those types of things. There are internal policies that we can look at, and I recommend that we do those because those are more achievable, I think, that they'll give us the ability for folks to, who want to, you know, participate in that, to do that.
And I just want to put this in some additional context. The state goal is very ambitious, and there's only a few main drivers that can get us there because, to get us to that threshold. There's a lot of little things you can do, as you mentioned, there's things we can do as a municipality that we have direct control over, and we absolutely are starting to work towards those things. For example, the new police station, you know, we've already started designing a pretty elaborate solar system that's going to take care of those energy needs, but those efforts, the efforts that we have direct control over for our facilities aren't going to get us there. You need big drivers like the electric vehicle transition, like CCAs, if that makes sense. You know, we looked into CCAs, but what we found right now in today's age is that it would probably behoove us to join together with other cities on that effort as opposed to trying to do it by ourselves. That's why it's recommended in this plan that way, but those types of things are what's going to get you to the threshold, because it needs big, big changes. Obviously, a lot of energy upgrades across town, that would be a big contributor, but to the point of what everybody's talking about, that's potentially costly. We might be able to implement policies to help people along with that, but the way we crafted this report, it includes recommendations that are probably ambitious, but it will get us there if they start to manifest. I think what's important is that we do continue to monitor it, and we adapt this plan as time goes on. That EV goal is a 2050 goal. You know, a lot can happen in the next 25 years, so we'll know a lot more as we move forward through the next five years, and we can adapt and we can change things as we move forward if we need to. But that's where we're at today. We had to, we had to make some decisions on what we thought was realistic with what we have to work with today to try to get us there. There's a lot of great ideas, we have a great community that's really energized about this subject matter, so I think it's going to take a lot of different, it's going to take a combination of all of this.
Right. Appreciate that. Mayor, if there's no more discussions.
I do have a couple, go ahead.
Sure, just briefly, one area that's really falling behind, I think, in electric vehicles is the logistics industry. We know that these trucks contribute to us having some of the worst air quality in the nation, so if we're really serious about addressing climate issues, we need to think about future rezoning. Is that something that's completely within our purview as a city council?
I basically have a question and a statement. The question is, I see we used Encinitas as an example. Do we factor in climate? I mean, they're on the ocean, and it's a total different climate than we have here. We're in a valley, and if you look at our history, we were known as valley of, even before there was any cars or anything, we were known the valley of smoke. We have these large hills around us, so trying to use Encinitas, I'm not sure if that's a good example.
I think that was really associated with their permit processing.
Is that what it was? Okay.
Policy that they had implemented.
I thought we were using it as a comparison, and it's kind of hard to compare somebody by the beach and it is somebody where we are. You know, I agree is probably unrealistic goals, but just because they're unrealistic doesn't mean we just can't try, okay? We don't get it, but we'll get there. If it takes us twice the time, it's better than it, but, you know, we have set some kind of goals, and whether we think they're achievable or not, at least we can try to grab for it and move forward, so I, you know, I agree, and we're probably maybe over ambitious, but if we even get three quarters of the way there, it's better than what we're doing right now, so anyway.
So if there's no more discussion on this item, I move that City Council adopt resolution number 8696 to adopt the negative declaration prepared for the project and adopt the 2050 climate action plan.
Second. A motion and second. Madam City Clerk?
Councilmember Beric?
Yes.
Councilmember Tejeda?
Yes.
Councilmember Davis?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Shaw?
Yes.
Mayor Sosido?
Yes.
Moving on to item L2, consideration of a purchase order modifications for the Redlands Fire Station number 262 remodel project, addressing changes to the scope of the project and increasing the contingency from 10% to 15% of the original contract amount. Fire Facilities and Community Services Director Crocker.
Thank you, Mayor. Members of the council, I'm in February of 2024, City Council approved a public works contract with Elegant Construction for the remodel and expansion of Fire Station number 262. The approved project budget included a 10% contingency to address any unforeseen change orders or site conditions. However, due to some necessary additions and equipment, the required contingency to complete the project increased from an original 10% to 15%. The additional costs were associated with generator site and connection work and fire sprinkler system installations. Because of these changes that were not a part of the original scope presented to council, staff is returning to request formal approval of the revised contingency and budget allocated for this project.
Thank you. Any questions for staff? Any public comment?
Well, I do have a question. Maybe you can give people the idea why it's cost more. I know there's some mitigations, that some things that we didn't realize.
It was the generator.
Right, that's what I'm saying, but I think maybe the public should know that we're just not doing this because we want to, is that we found out that once we went into this.
It was a big fire station, we had to install the generator, yeah.
Larger generator and fire sprinklers and living quarters were additional to meet what we already hold people accountable for.
All right, thank you. Any, any public comment on this item on Zoom, Mr. Moderator?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. What's the wish of the council?
I move to approve purchase order modification, increasing the approval contingency from 10% to 15% of the original contract amount.
Second.
A motion and second. Madam City Clerk?
Councilmember Beric?
Yes.
Councilmember Tejeda?
Yes.
Councilmember Davis?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Shaw?
Yes.
Mayor Sosido?
Yes. Item L3, this is consideration of fiscal year 2025-26, Facilities and Community Services Department annual agreements and purchase orders for the amount, annual, the total annual amount not to exceed $7,767.34 and a total not to exceed the amount of $23,665,429.89, and determine that the approval is exempt from environmental review pursuant to section 15061B3 of the state guidelines implementing the California Environmental Quality Act. Facilities and Community Services Director Crocker.
Thank you, Mayor. Members of the council, the city's facilities and community services department regularly procures supplies and services to support the operations throughout the city. The report before you is FCS annual agreements and purchase orders. I'm not going to repeat the totals again, but funding for these supplies and services are included in each division's operating budget request for the fiscal year 2526. That concludes my report.
Any questions for staff, comments? Mr. Moderator, do we have any public comments on this item?
No, Mr. Mayor.
What's the wish of the council?
I move the City Council to determine approval of the fiscal year 2025-26, Facilities and Community Services Department's agreements and annual purchase orders is exempt from environmental review pursuant to section 15061B3 of the state's guidelines implementing the SEQA Act.
Second. We have a motion.
And I move to approve the fiscal year 2025-26, Facilities and Community Services Department's annual agreements and purchase orders.
Second.
Motion and a second. Madam City Clerk?
Councilmember Beric?
Yes.
Councilmember Tejeda?
Yes.
Councilmember Davis?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Shaw?
Yes.
Mayor Sosido?
Yes. Moving on to item L4, introduction ordinance number 2984, amending title II, chapter 2.16 of the Redlands Municipal Code relating to the city purchasing and disposition of surplus personal property. Management Services Finance Director Garcia.
Thank you, members of the council. Thank you, Mayor. Tonight, we're introducing this ordinance, which proposes updates to the city's purchasing ordinance. The proposed updates modernize our procurement framework to reflect current legal thresholds and operational needs. The updates include revisions to the public project construction thresholds in accordance with the Uniform Public Construction Cost Accounting Act as amended by an assembly bill in 2024. These updates increase the city manager's contract authority and adjust bidding thresholds to reflect inflation as well as streamlining processes. Additional changes to the ordinance, modernize general procurement limits, clarify federal and state funding compliance, and authorize the city manager to approve certain agreements such as cybersecurity and recreation-related contracts. We recommend the introduction of this ordinance tonight with formal adoption at the council's next meeting, July 15, 2025, and that concludes my presentation.
Thank you, Director Garcia. Any questions for staff? Any public comment on Zoom, Mr. Moderator?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. What's the wish of the council?
Move to adopts, I move the City Council introduce ordinance number 2984.
Second. Motion and a second. Madam City Clerk?
Councilmember Beric?
Yes.
Councilmember Tejeda?
Yes.
Councilmember Davis?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Shaw?
Yes.
Mayor Sosido?
Yes. Item L5, consideration of a professional service agreement with advanced integration and controls to provide on-call supervisory control and data acquisition, SCADA, integration services for the water production and wastewater divisions with an initial one-year term value not to exceed $673,000, and options to extend two-year additional years of total not to exceed $2,019,000, and determine that this action is exempt from environmental review pursuant to section 15061B3 of the state guidelines implementing the California Environmental Quality Act. Municipal Utilities and Engineering Director Harris.
Well, thank you, Mayor and council. The SCADA system is a tool that we just can't live without. We literally use SCADA every minute of every day to monitor and operate our wastewater and our water utility systems. We can operate remotely all of our treatment plants, chemical feed pumps, well sites, and more. It's invaluable in that it gives our on-call staff alarms when things aren't operating the way they're supposed to be. It's a very complex system, requires on-call support is what I'm trying to say, and as you're aware, cybersecurity attacks are increasing, not decreasing. It's an important tool and safeguarding against that as well. We issued an RFP in the middle of March, March 12th this year. We received the four proposals listed in your, from the firms listed in your staff report on April 2nd. We ranked those based on qualifications, and then some of the staffers in my department actually brought two of the two highest ranking firms in and did in-person interviews, and ultimately decided that AIC was the most qualified firm for this work. They then negotiated the contract values that you just called out. The initial term of the agreement would be for one year at a value of $673,000. There's options to extend for two additional one-year periods, which would bring a total potential amount of $2,019,000 if we elect to extend the agreements for the two years. There's no fiscal impact, we're, today is the start of a new fiscal year, and all of these costs are included in the wastewater utility budgets, and I'm happy to answer questions if you have them.
How is this SCADA system powered?
Well, so it's powered electrically, there are backup generators, so that when we lose power, they continue to run. Does that answer?
Yes, yes, so are they independently powered themselves, or is the whole plant powered by a backup generator?
Well, it's a tough question to answer. We have several types of backup generators, there are battery backup generators, there are natural gas-powered backup generators, so we have sort of multi-redundant systems in case we lose our primary electrical feed to any of our sites.
Yeah, and those questions come from earlier this year, because of the wind event that we had, we lost power, and to Councilmember Beric's question, when we lose power, will we lose the ability to pump water into our reservoirs, which, you know, put water into our hydrants and into our system, so I just wanted to make sure that we do have redundancy in our power system for our SCADA system. As you say, it runs every minute of the day, every hour of the day, 24 hours a day.
Very important tool.
Yes, thank you so much. Any other questions? Okay, what's the wish of the, or is any public comment on this item, Mr. Moderator?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. What's the wish of the council?
Move that City Council determine approval of a professional services agreement with advanced integration and controls is exempt from environmental review pursuant to section 15061B3 of the state's guidelines implementing SEQA, the SEQA Act, and I move the City Council approve a professional services agreement with advanced integration and controls.
Second. Motion and a second. Madam City Clerk?
Councilmember Beric?
Yes.
Councilmember Tejeda?
Yes.
Councilmember Davis?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Shaw?
Yes.
Mayor Sosido?
Yes.
And thank you. That takes us to item M, individual council member announcements and reports. We received a written report on Mayor Protem's activities. I'll start with Councilmember Beric.
I attended the Juneteenth event at the park. It was, God, fabulous. Seems like it increased tenfold. I mean, I want to thank the city, they had several booths there and helped cooperate. We had the fire department, police, everyone cooperated with, and to make this a great event. That, I guess, event stage we had, boy, was that a good investment. I know we've had it for a long time, but really, it's really come into, it's been really helped out. Anyway, that's the main thing.
Councilmember Davis?
Yeah, I agree. I also went to Juneteenth and thought it was a fantastic event. I went to a Blue Zones Health Mixer at the Redlands Public Market, that's an amazing space. I went to the Blue Zones Walk at Brookside Park Saturday morning and some other things, but I'll stop there for now.
Okay, great. Councilmember Tejeda?
Yes. I also attended the Juneteenth celebration at Southern Park. I went to two Redlands Bowl receptions. I was at the RPOA golf tournament and a Texonia Park workshop related to the pending improvements to the park.
I think there's only two other different events that I went to that have not been mentioned, but were, that Mayor Protem and Tejeda, Councilmember Tejeda mentioned, is I went to the Steyman's Eye Care Grand Opening here on Cajon Street, and the XP Realty was downtown on State Street, and I just want to mention that And I just want to mention that the city manager and Mayor Protem and myself, we attended a Cal League joint meeting of two different regions, and it was very informative on Prop 36, on trying to refine that and make it that it has what it needs to be able to provide public safety the tools to be able to do their job and protect our community, and that's all I have for right now. So if there aren't any other announcements, we stand adjourned to the next city council meeting held July 15. Thank you so much. We stand adjourned.